Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Martz, call the January 23, 2023 City Council Services, Safety and Parks Committee meeting to order. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on any of tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. That means if you are on the phone, plus press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, please look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I will wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Martz, no one has signed up on the sign-in sheet to speak.
All right. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. With that, we will move to approval of minutes. The minutes for the November 15, 2020 council meeting is, does anyone wish to put forward a motion? Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I will move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I will second, and I'm glad Councilmember DeMichele made the motion, as she was actually in attendance at that meeting, and I hadn't been put on this board yet or on this committee yet.
You had not been appointed guest, and nice to have you here. I'm sure you will do a good job of replacing the troublemaker, Chris Ray. We have a motion that is in front of us and has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries three to zero. Next, we have the first of two agenda items this evening, ID 1317, amendments to IMC 2.20 cemetery code, and this is going to be presented by City Clerk Geezer. And I believe Director Watling and Randy Darst from the Cemetery Board.
Thank you, Chair Martz and committee members. My name is Tisha Geezer, City Clerk, and as you mentioned, Chair, also here tonight are Jeff Watling, the Parks and Community Services Director, Rick Still, the Parks Operations Manager, Randy Darst, the Cemetery Board Chair, and Barbara Wood, one of the board members, and you'll be hearing from a couple of them later on here, but I'll get us started off. So tonight, we're asking for your recommendation on whether to proceed with changes to IMC 2.20, which establishes the Cemetery Board and has some provisions related to the cemetery and the board. As a reminder, and for the new committee member, Jeff and I were here in June 2022 to talk about a larger item, the consolidation of boards and commissions. At that time, we had two questions for you. One was whether to proceed with the sunset of the Cable TV Commission. You were supportive of that change, and the full council sunsetted that commission in July of 2022. And the second question was whether to proceed with asking the Cemetery Board to evaluate their purpose, whether they might consider a consolidation or sunset of the board, or a review and change to their duties and responsibilities, and we committed to returning with a recommendation from the Cemetery Board in the first quarter of 2023. The committee was also supportive of proceeding with that and expressed your care and concern for the cemetery and the history there. Following the June meeting, the Cemetery Board began talking about their purview, evaluating their duties, and this occurred from July all the way through December with the board making their final recommendation and looking at the code amendments that you see here tonight at their January meeting. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to talk a bit about the proposal.
Thank you, Clerk Geezer. Good evening, councilmembers. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director. Yeah, before I go into key elements of the proposal, I thought I'd just highlight some of the work that was done these past seven months, as Tisha mentioned. The Cemetery Board, and hats off to Chair Darst, Rick Still, our Park Operations Manager, who serves as a staff liaison. The Cemetery Board went through a pretty long process of looking at historic roles, reviewing some of the work that they've done over the decades, literal decades, also taking a look at some of the current roles that the Cemetery Board was doing, and then really allowing that work to help clarify really roles that the Cemetery Board might want to do more of or really should do. This was also really brought into light with, you might recall, a number of years ago, we, the city, went through a process with Flintoffs, our operating partner, and created our management agreement in 2018. So that management agreement also became, really helped to shed light on this work in recognizing as the roles were clarified between the city and Flintoffs, it really helped to also fit this niche of what really could and should the role of the Cemetery Board be. It was a very thorough process. As I said, over the decades, this group has done a lot of work and a tremendous amount of work, and certainly something to be commended. I think the first key point of this proposal, as we went through the review, we also through the review process, had check-ins with administration. It became clear, and as you see in the slide, the first element of the proposal was to continue the work of the Cemetery Board, but do it in a little more clarified fashion. I'll jump into that, sorry, I went the wrong direction. The makeup of the proposal, these five bullet points really, I think, highlight it. Along with continuing the role of the Cemetery Board, the proposal before you proposes to reduce the minimum number of board meetings required, so take that minimum requirement from once every two months to quarterly. This isn't necessarily meaning only having four meetings a year, but just giving the board that flexibility, knowing during peak times of the year, there probably will be meeting monthly, but knowing there might be certain times of the year when quarterly will do. That second bullet, the pink bullet, clarifying the role of the Cemetery Board as advisory in amending the duties and responsibilities, you'll see a lot of amendments, a lot of proposed amendments that speak to this. What we really seek to do with these proposed changes is really focus their role on monitoring operations of the cemetery. That's why, again, having Rick Still, our Park Operations Manager, as a staff liaison, makes so much sense. Monitoring the cemetery fund, that's both revenues and expenditures on a monthly or quarterly basis. Reviewing annually and recommending fee changes as necessary would be a key role of the Cemetery Board. Advising on capital projects. You might recall, as we went through the management agreement with Flintoffs, we spent a lot of time talking with you as council, how do we look at not only near-term needs, but long-term needs of the cemetery? There are some capital investments that that cemetery is going to need, and so really allowing the Cemetery Board to help provide that advice and guidance, not only on near-term projects as we're doing them, but really trying to take a long view, capital investment needs with that public asset, within that public asset. Also, a key role is adopting rules for care, for standards, maintenance standards, headstone standards, et cetera, really helping provide advice there. And then also really helping the city in monitoring inventory, burial types that are offered there at the cemetery, and also, if needed, looking at either expansion of burial types or expansion of space. So that clarification of roles is a really key part of these amendments. Also in the proposal are the incorporation of the board roles that were found in the management agreement, so making sure the management agreement and these proposed bylaws speak to one another and are complementary with one another. You'll also hear a little bit further from Tisha about this one, a recommendation of removing the cemetery fees from this section, from the IMC, and formalizing in a fee ordinance. That'll be part of perhaps some potential bigger work that we're doing within the IMC and how we recognize fees. Also, within these recommendations are, as our city attorney had a chance to review them, we're addressing some outdated provisions that were in this old IMC, provisions that are already in Washington state law. Those provisions included the annexation of the cemetery, restrictions on burials, and penalties for vandalizing at the cemetery. And again, all of those have provisions covered in state law and were a bit redundant, so the recommendation was to remove those. So again, what's reflected tonight represents a lot of hard work by the Cemetery Board, a lot of self-analysis and sort of review of what this board can be moving forward and playing an advisory role in a really, really important city asset. With that, I'm going to invite Cemetery Board Chair Randy Darst to come up and maybe share a few words on not only the process, but just insights from the board.
Good evening. I'm Randy Darst. Been on the Cemetery Board for about eight years now. It's near and dear to my heart. I have a lot of family and friends hanging out up there. So, you know, making sure that it's in good, you know, it's being operated properly, properly, fiscally sound, it's an important thing to me, as it is to our board. I don't have a lot to add to what Jeff said as far as some of the revisions in the process, but I do want to acknowledge that what he says and what the staff report says, it's a very good job, very comprehensive, and really does incorporate the Cemetery Board's comments, concerns, recommendations, suggestions. It was a very collaborative process. I think they listened well, they're very objective, and we, the board, really appreciates that And we're very pleased that the initial recommendation is to retain the Cemetery Board, and we definitely are on board with some of the revisions, with the revisions that have been touched on by Jeff to the Chapter 2.2. You know, it hadn't been really looked at since mid-'80s, I think, so it was time, you know, things change. And we were maybe a little bit reluctant at first. You get a little defensive sometimes, you know, when, you know, you go through a process like this, because we really do think that we've done some really good work, and not only the current Cemetery Board, but, you know, the Cemetery Board goes back to 1915, right? So we've been around 100, I can't even do the math, quite a few years. Actually, it dated back to 1908, you know, because the Cemetery Committee came into existence prior to the city annexing the property into the city in 1915, and so that's when the Cemetery Board came into existence. So because the cemetery was looking so terrible back in 1908, the citizens of Isiquah got together and formed a committee, basically, and they went around and tried to get people to volunteer, donate a dollar. You know, their fund was about $34 the last time I looked at it. So anyway, it's been, the cemetery's been near and dear to the folks in Isiquah for a lot of years. I found it very useful and informative to go through the process, and I really do appreciate Tisha and Rick and Jeff facilitating that process for us. It's not something that we've done as a board, or I've done since I retired eight years ago. So it was very helpful to have them on board and assisting us. It was good to look at the responsibilities, the roles and the duties, and look at the value the Cemetery Board has brought over the years in proper operation and maintenance. And really, the fiscal oversight has been important too, as well as, you know, the growth of the cemetery, you know, the Cemetery Board was instrumental in the '80s for leading the development of Hillside, Upper Hillside Cemetery. That, you know, it was one of the bigger projects that they've ever undertaken. So I think the board has done some great work over the last 108 years, and we are pleased that the mayor and the administration recognize this and are recommending that the Cemetery Board be retained. It's a place that I'm proud of, and I think the community greatly appreciates. And so then, at our January meeting, the board did review the final recommendations from staff and administration, and we also reviewed the final draft of the revised Chapter 2.2, the proposed revisions, and the board then did make a motion and approve the motion to recommend approval of the revised Isiquah Municipal Code to the mayor and the city council. And we, the board, looks forward to continuing its work, and like Jeff said, we do have several projects in the works right now, and it takes a lot of time and effort, and we're a group of three right now. We're hoping to get a few more members come the turn of the new year here. And we also have a number of projects that we're excited about, perhaps pursuing in the future, that really need to be done when we have some additional time and resources. So thank you for your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think we can proceed to the next part of the presentation, but thank you.
All right. I just have a few more slides. I'll move really quickly through here, so we can answer any questions you might have. So Jeff and Randy went through some of the changes to the duties and responsibilities that were addressed, so I'm not going to walk through them individually, but they're shown both in the proposed code changes and here on the screen. They were trued up a bit with the management agreement and to remove some inconsistencies and redundancies in approval of warrant review and such. One thing I wanted to touch on briefly that's not shown on the slide here is the cemetery fees. So you saw there was an exhibit with fees in the packet. So the fees there are existing fees incorporating a 10% increase. So the current IMC provides for the mayor to administratively increase the fees based on the CPI annually. The Cemetery Board considered the CPI for June through July, which was 10%, I believe, and recommended that that inflationary increase be incorporated in the fees. The mayor, they made this recommendation, the mayor who supported their recommendation. Because, as Jeff mentioned, we have a citywide goal of moving our fees out of our municipal code and into an annual fee resolution to bring some transparency and coordination of that process, we are proposing removing the cemetery fees and instead approving them through the ordinance that we'll bring forward, hopefully at the February 6 meeting, that would also adopt these code changes. And of course, we would like the fees with the inflationary increase approved as part of that process. When the fee resolution comes to be later this year or next, we'll include the cemetery fees as part of that process. So I wanted to speak for that, to that for a moment. So as far as the options tonight, they, of course, are to recommend the administration's proposal and the Cemetery Board's proposal to move forward with the proposed revisions, but certainly if you have recommended changes or other considerations, please feel free to share those. You are clear on our recommendation, I believe. Real quickly, timing and next steps. As Randy alluded to, the Cemetery Board is currently functioning with three board members out of five seats and is lacking any alternates as well. So we will certainly be hoping through the Board and Commission recruitment process that's about to begin, anytime now, to be shoring up the Cemetery Board. As I mentioned, we're hoping to bring this ordinance back to the city council at the February 6 meeting, and would like your input on whether that can return on consent or regular business. The ordinance would be effective in early March, and we will be bringing Board and Commission confirmation of appointments to the council in mid-April, which, again, will hopefully include a few new Cemetery Board members. With that, here's the direction we're looking for from you tonight, and we're all here if you have any questions.
I have a question. So you talked about a CPI-adjusted fee. Does this ordinance, I see there's one use of that for this 10%, but does this presuppose automatic increases going forward?
It does not. The wording in the draft ordinance, which I realize is not in your packet tonight, we were having the attorney take a look at it and just got the final edits back, it would like the IMC, it would allow for an administratively-approved inflationary increase if recommended, upon recommendation of the Cemetery Board, so it would sort of remain status quo.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. First, Mr. Darst, thank you for your service to our community on the Cemetery Board. I live very close and to the cemetery, and I'm always impressed with, first, how well it's maintained, and, second, on all the important holidays, whether it's Veterans Day or other important holidays, the flags are always up by my friends that are up there by their headstones. So thank you for making that happen. I know it's a coordination with some of the Cub Scout, Boy Scout troops, et cetera, et cetera. It's a testament to our community and how we honor those that came before us. So I want to first say that. I had a question about the fees themselves. Oftentimes, there's a perception in our community that the fees cover everything that is needed, including capital expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. And so when the fees get increased, sometimes people think that, well, I'm paying for the whole darn thing when I go and pay one fee. Could you comment on how much the fees cover, just in general, and how much as a kind of a percentage comes from other sources throughout the city?
Is that on? It's on. Tisha's tagging me for that. Jeff Watling again. Yeah, you know, the cemetery fund is actually set up to function very much like an enterprise fund. So the intention of that cemetery fund is, as we're collecting fees, we're not only addressing operational costs, but we're also securing some funds for long-term care and as well the capital investment. So that's part of our capital strategy, too, is taking a look at, as revenue is coming in, how are we making initial investments that either add capacity to columbarium niches, et cetera? But the cemetery fund is really, as I said, set up more like an enterprise.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the information. Oftentimes, the citizens don't know the difference between an enterprise fund and some of the other funds that we might do for transportation, or we're getting funds from the state or other sources. So it's good information. Thank you.
I will ask another question, and I'm surprised, you know, I've seen these fees over the years a number of times. I don't remember the estate standard in the estate double, and what is that? And they're quite a bit more expensive than other cemetery options. So can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure. I don't have those in front of me, but I'll do this off of memory. So in 2019, we brought the cemetery fees before you as council. They hadn't been reviewed in a really, really long time. You might recall at that time, those are new fees that were established then in 2019, and so part of diversifying plot options, as we've worked with our managing partner, Flintoffs, we've identified a couple areas of Upper Hillside Cemetery where there might be estate lots that could be, plots that could be purchased. So that was it.
Sorry. What does an estate plot mean?
So what that means is a family could purchase an estate plot that would have access for multiple burial sites within that. That plot would be somewhat set aside, established through some type of vegetation area, to be basically buying multiple plots.
Got it. And so multiple plots, and you're saying sort of set aside or separate from the...
Yeah. What we've looked at is sort of the upper, you might recall a map in 2019, that we were looking at sort of the upper, the upper edge of Upper Hillside Cemetery, so the back of this estate plot could be planted with vegetation to give some definition for that plot, but also give some natural separation with a screening with the neighbors.
Got it. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Tisha, it was that, you closed and there's no further summary of, you're just ready for us to deliberate. All right.
Yes.
Well, then, we have reached a point where we can take public input. Do we have, Clerk, do we have anybody online indicating that they want to speak?
Chair Martz, we have a couple of virtual attendees, but no virtual hands raised.
No virtual hands raised. Anybody here this evening want to speak to this issue before we deliberate on it? Anyone wishing to speak? Third time? Nope? All right, so we can deliberate on it. What do you think?
I think this has been well thought out, great contributions from the community at large and our volunteer Cemetery Board, and I think it's ready to go back to council with a recommendation for approval.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Thanks. Yes, I was saying before the meeting started that I was so happy when I read the packet because I was fearful that we had a recommendation to close the Cemetery Board, and I would have been very sad if that had happened. This has, Board has been around since 1915, and also, as mentioned by Councilmember Joe, that cemetery holds so much of Isiquah history and is, again, a reflection of the esteem that we hold our earlier generations in. So I'm very, very pleased that the Cemetery Board will continue. As I was reading through the packet, the reason I didn't have any questions is every question I had was answered. It was one of the most thorough presentations we've received in a long time, and I really appreciate that aspect of it as well, and also clearly showed how much thought and dialogue went into the final proposal. So I was very pleased to see that as well. So appreciation to everybody who worked hard on it. So I, too, would like to approve this recommendation. I would love to see the Cemetery Board continue. I would hope that maybe once again, I got to sit in on one meeting right before the pandemic, so perhaps sometime in the future I can come back, because I was very impressed with the board work that evening as well. So, what is that? Good speed ahead. So, and I guess I would ask whether we want to put this on consent, or do we want to put this on the regular agenda? That would be the question I would have, but I would approve it's moving forward in either case.
Yeah, I would like to... I would like to take the vote, and then, once we take the vote, can decide how to route it afterwards. I'm going to be supporting this as well. You know, one of the things that I think is really important about a community is, of course, how we treat our citizens when they most need our help. And, you know, I've said before, you know, my mother passed away in 2008, and she didn't have a lot. And in Minnesota, private cemeteries are very expensive, but she was lucky enough to live in a community that, like Isiquah, had a public option that was not super expensive. And so in the midst of everything else that was going on, I didn't have to, you know, countenance the idea of spending a whole bunch of money out of my pocket in a time that was, that was so much, was so challenging. So I love that we can continue to consider this important, and as long as we have folks who continue to want to serve the city and help maintain this really important aspect of our community, I'm supportive of continuing to do that. So I guess I will move to proceed with changes to IMC 2.20 Cemetery Board to update the duties and responsibilities of the board and make other changes as recommended by the Cemetery Board.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. That carries three to zero. And now, do we want to have it come back on consent, or did we have a recommendation from the administration? City Administrator?
Generally, if it's unanimous in committee consent, it's often an option.
Generally, if it's unanimous in committee consent, it's often an option.
Councilmember Joe?
Personally, I think that our council members do a great job reading their packets. And so I believe that it could come back on consent, and if people do have questions, they would pull it down.
All right. I'm seeing agreement. So we're asking that it be taken back on consent, or brought back to the full council on consent. All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, staff and members of the community that were here for this this evening, including Randy Darst. We will now move on to ID 1345 Arts Grant Recommendations from our own Amy Dukes, Arts Program Administrator. Welcome.
Hopefully, that is the hardest part. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Amy Dukes, the Arts Program Administrator for the City of Issaquah, and I'm here tonight to present to you the 2023 Arts Grant Recommendations via the Arts Commission. So there are some beautiful pictures to accompany, just to let you know. Everything that is pictured in this presentation are things that were supported by the Arts Commission in their funding in 2022. And really here just to get direction from you all about placement to help move forward the allocation of the arts grants. So just to give a quick background of the purpose of the arts grants, every year for decades, the Arts Commission has opened a open call for applications to help support community arts programs for the community, for visitors, and really to make a vibrant cultural scene in Issaquah, really hoping to support things that are providing meaningful arts engagement, really letting people experience something unique, really hopeful that they are, all of the programs collectively are reaching all types of people, every type of community member that we have, age, ability, and otherwise. We really look for opportunities to support the cultural diversity of the community and things that really help build our creative and vibrant arts community. And then also, it's really important, we feel, at the Arts Commission, to support our art sector and our artists that make Issaquah home. And so really looking for projects that also provide opportunities to keep them sustainable. So this year, actually, in order to sort of clean up things a little bit and make them more clear, the arts grants were divided into categories. So that arts partnership category is really intended to support those arts organizations that call Issaquah home. And we hear time and time again from them that what they really truly need is just general support for their mission of producing arts for the community. And so this grant round was the first one that we allowed kind of a general operating arts support request, and that could be up to 10% of their operating budget. We are, based on some feedback from this first round, we are going to adjust that some. We actually only have one arts organization that felt that this was an attractive option for them. So I think we do need to adjust. You know, a lot of our arts organizations are volunteer only, and so their budgets are very small. So we'll be looking at that. And then arts projects, this was also new. So we maxed those requests at $5,000. And really, we're intended to support requests coming from organizations who do not have arts as their primary mission. And this is actually the majority of groups that provide arts programs in Issaquah. We have a very small arts and culture organization community, but we have a lot of civic and other types of organizations that provide an arts program as part of their offerings. For example, Dia, Friends of Lake Mamish, and organizations like that. So we thought it would be better to have these as arts projects so we could really see the budget that is specifically tied to that art project. And that worked out really well this year. And then finally, we also kind of made some significant revisions to the arts and schools program. So the max request for that is $2,500, but we are going to, moving forward, limit it to schools that are either in the city limits or who serve a majority of Issaquah residents in their school. And that, we also are going to move the request time period for that and better align that program with the academic calendar, which should really make for a more effective program. So you will see in the recommendations a set aside, bless you, for the schools program. And we have estimated, although we do still need to verify, but we have estimated that there are 10 schools within the district that fit that criteria. And so we've set aside enough funding if all of them should request. And so just to give you quickly the criteria that the Arts Commission uses. So we have three main criteria, and all of the applications were scored based on this criteria. Public benefit, so serving the community in a way that's meaningful and also measurable. Artistic value, that there is a truly artistic component to the project that has a value to our residents and visitors. And then the managerial capacity and feasibility. We do have the grant program on a reimbursement basis. So that does require that the organization is able to front the expense and be reimbursed. And also, we're trying to make our contracting process more streamlined and easy, but it is a bit of paperwork. So we just want to make sure that organizations are able to manage that. So with those criteria, the arts commissioners did a fabulous job of evaluating, I hope you can read that, it's very small, evaluating all of the applications and scoring them. And then they sort of created a cutoff point. So anything that scored 11 or above out of 15 was recommended for funding. So you'll see just a couple did not meet that threshold. So we're still getting, we're still getting back organizations into the fold. And, you know, we definitely did lose some organizations, projects at least, maybe not the organization, but just their capacity to do an arts project during these last couple of years. So the load of applications was a little bit lighter than it has been before COVID. So I'm going to need to put glasses on. So the recommendations are $138,380 for the arts project support and the arts partnership support, and then $25,000 holding out for that program that we'll administer later in the year for a total grant recommendation of $163,380. And there's just a quick visual of how that breaks out. So as you can see, the arts projects category is up, is large by quite a margin. And just to quickly let you know how we got here, we released the application in November of '22. The deadline was December 9th of 2022. The Arts Commission held two grant review meetings that were well attended by the public, January 9th, and actually just last Wednesday on the 18th. And then we're here tonight and hopeful to be placed on a council agenda. Once these grant recommendations are approved, we would move to contracting. All funded projects and organizations do get a site visit by at least one, if not more, arts commissioners. We do data collection around the metrics that they identify as important to their project. And then, of course, we always like to celebrate and promote their work. So again, the direction that I'm seeking tonight is just how to move these forward in the process. And I do want to acknowledge there are arts commissioners on WebEx joining us tonight. So Arts Commission Chair Tracy Mahadio and Arts Commissioner Brigitte Agabra. And I don't know if they might want to say something.
I have a question. When you mentioned about celebrating our art, how do we done that in past years? Long ago, we would talk a little bit about art projects specifically that were being funded. But nowadays, like for our 2022, I saw some amazing painting in there. How would I find out more about how?
Yeah, so we definitely promote everything via all of the city's channels. We try really hard to promote before the fact so that residents know, usually that's via the e-news. And most, I should note that most things in this recommendation list are free and open to the public. You know, there's obviously some exceptions, like Village Theater requires a ticket for many of its activities. But most of these are just free and open community events. So we like to promote them beforehand so people know to participate. And then we will also take pictures when we're there and promote via our social media and other opportunities. So.
Okay, so social media, websites, that kind of stuff. I was just looking to try to see if I could find things that had been done in 2022. It's not obvious to me how you find, I mean, we have a section on public art, I suppose, but that doesn't, I mean,
Yeah, it's.
Some of those things have been around for a while.
Yes. We do list all the organizations that we fund. In some years past, we have provided links to all of the projects and programs. That has some challenges sometimes because it does require that they keep the links up on their end, too. But I'd say it's more dynamic and that it is more in that social media realm.
Okay. I mean, it just seems like there's an opportunity to, you know, sort of celebrate the art. And unfortunately, you know, we live in a universe where not everybody understands art. I think it's an important thing to invest in as a community. But I think having some ability to show folks what happens in a given year, the kinds of things that we fund, I think would be important. And this does feel like it could use a little freshening.
Yeah, I think that we would like to create more of a report about what's funded and make a more dynamic digital promotion as well as website. But then I also do know from our funded groups that they really do appreciate the social media promotion and that they get a lot of followers and new people engaged that way. So.
I just think it's a great way to promote the art in the community. Yeah, when you say social media, like what kinds of social media are you talking about?
Mostly Instagram, some Facebook, but Instagram really seems to be the platform that is most vibrant for this type of.
I thought you were going to say that, and I don't know how to use Instagram. I have to confess. That's unfortunate.
We do not want to leave you out. So that's important to me.
Well, I just know people are moving into things like Instagram and TikTok and all sorts of things that I don't know how to use, but that's unfortunate.
We also have asked in our application for groups to consider cataloging and taking video during their projects so that they can share it. So a lot of times, things that are funded were not necessarily, you know, the only promoter of. So they themselves are also out there promoting them on their end. And we do require that they include that the Arts Commission and the City of Issaquah has funded their project. So there's a little bit more acknowledgement there, too.
Got it.
But thank you for those recommendations. It's helpful.
Oh, city administrator?
Yeah, I just wanted to amplify the last point Amy made. You know, every patron who comes to a Village Theater event opens the program and sees brought to you by the City of Issaquah.
Good.
So I think that those kind of things are very important. So people come from outside the community to enjoy events. We may not be the producer of the activity, but we are listed as sponsors. And so I think people make that connection as well.
Good.
So the thousands, I'm not sure how many thousands generally come annually to a Village Theater event, but you feel every time they open a program or you go to their website, the city logo is prominently displayed. So I think that in and of itself is an important connection.
And I'll add to that, because I just became a subscriber to Village Theater this year, that they also give acknowledgement from the stage to the city, every performance that I've been to. So that's nice. I know Seattle Shakespeare, when they do the Shakespeare in the Park, they give a big shout out to artists. So that's one of the reasons that we have site visitors, too, just to make sure that that's being portrayed accurately. Yeah.
Councilmember DeMichele?
So as I'm sure you know, my concern always is, do we have enough money? And during the budgeting process last year, it was noted by several council members that the arts fund is diminishing because we've had some theaters close. It was really a result of the pandemic and the, you know, lack of arts activities during those two years. So I am going to presume, and maybe you can correct me, but the $2,500 limit, the $5,000 limit and so forth, I presume were levels that were set based on the capacity of the arts fund? Is that correct?
That's correct. So, yes.
And so by setting those limits, then we don't know what people might have applied for if they had had an open-ended grant. And so this is not a criticism. It's just a concern that we're not capturing maybe what the total need is in the community for arts programming and also what we might be able to obtain if we had a more robust arts fund. And so that's a concern of mine. And I'm hoping that we will be looking at that more intensely in the future. That might be a question for the city administrator and not Amy, so.
Absolutely. As we said during the budget process for '23, '24, the administration doesn't see tying just the revenue from the tax that we collect on tickets, most picture tickets, other amusements, to this. So we'll have another discussion. We committed for this cycle to fund it at the level we have been. And I think as we move into budget discussions into the future, we'll ask the council, how far do you want to go? And I think that's an open question for the council to consider.
We are currently scheduled to come back to you to have that discussion at committee this spring.
Or summer.
Or summer.
That's, you know, yeah. I think as long as we're planning to have that discussion that, and you also brought up the reimbursement aspect of the grants that we give. And I have some ideas about how we might handle that, especially with, there's organizations on this list who get grants from us year after year after year, and obviously have demonstrated their ability to manage a grant. And so I'd like us to look at that and see how we might rethink how we handle those groups that have obviously been providing us with service for quite some time. So anyway, you know, great job. And those are my concerns, maybe not my questions, but my concerns about the future of arts here in Issaquah. So thanks.
Thanks. I appreciate your very thoughtful comments.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Chairman. With respect to the question about reporting, has there been any consideration of maybe, well, let me start with this first. Just in the interest of full disclosure, I'm on the board for The Garage, a teen cafe. So my colleagues know that, and if we need to cut out that piece as a voting piece, we can do that, et cetera, et cetera. But to my question, has there been any consideration, I think that Councilmember DeMichele was on to a point where organizations have been getting funding from us for a number of years. And I was wondering, in the PDC, if you are under a certain dollar amount, you're on a short form for reporting. Whereas if you're over a certain amount, you have to do all the reporting and all the different, you know, full disclosure type things. I'm wondering if there might be some consideration of having a short form for organizations that might meet some criteria that we would set so that we know them as an organization, we have worked with them. And so it'd be easier for those organizations while still adhering to, I think, the items that the Finance Committee want us to have in there for the issues of an audit and what have you. So just throw that out there for consideration by staff and the administration. My other question perhaps is for city administrator Bob Kowitz. I see that the Downtown Issaquah Association is receiving quite a bit of support this year. And do they still have an MOU out there that we have not? year, and do they still have an MOU out there that we have not signed with them? And are they just two separate buckets of money, so that it's an apple-orange type thing? If you could kind of give me a little bit of background there.
Sure. The administration came to the council during the 2021 budget cycle, saying that any funds to be allocated to the Downtown Issaquah Association, the administration was going to request an MOU. We spent a year negotiating an MOU, and we're unsuccessful. So the Downtown Issaquah Association received no money from the City of Issaquah during 2022. We continue to discuss an MOU for 2023 and have yet to resolve that. So that is where that is. I mean, as far as are these different buckets of money, yes and no. The MOU dollars were coming through, a pass-through from the real estate transfer tax. These are general fund dollars, so they are different buckets, but still things that the City Council allocates through the annual budget process. So I know that there were additional requests that De made that were not funded. How many additional?
There was one additional request.
Only one?
That was not funded, because it felt repetitive to another project.
So they were the second-largest recipient of dollars, as proposed this evening, after Village Theater. You know, it's our hope that we can continue to talk with DIA and find opportunities to support their efforts.
Would it be within council discretion to ask the administration to consider whether or not, one, it's legal for us to hold these funds back, and if it might be appropriate to hold these funds back until an MOU is signed? In other words, using all of our fiscal elements or, you know, tools that we have, I think it's important that we have an MOU for this organization. If the administration is recommending, you know, to just go ahead and let it go through, I'd certainly like to hear that. But first, I'll hear your thoughts on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe, members of the committee. Downtown Issaquah Association is a separate nonprofit. If they do not wish to abide by any terms and conditions that the city might place on dollars, I think that's their business. And if they can operate without city support, I mean, good for them. I think it's important to provide arts opportunities in the community. They have demonstrated the ability to do that, and so in this instance, with the grants, I'm not sure how much that they've received in past years, but certainly have received things.
They did receive $32,500 last year, so this does represent a small decrease.
So they seem to be pretty flush. You know, I think the question just is, what's the role of the city in that? So it's up to the council. I don't think there's any law, legal issues here. I think it's really a policy question if the council wished to withdraw this funding for DIA pending an additional MOU. I mean, that's a policy question for the council. But at this point, that's not what the administration is recommending. I think we feel comfortable moving forward with the arts dollars. I mean, it's unfortunate in some respects. I think that, you know, certainly many Main Streets around America benefit from that additional public funding. If we have one that doesn't have a need for that funding, then that's great, and, you know, perhaps in future years, we look and see if there's not a need for arts funding either, then that can go to others. I think, as Councilmember DeMichele said, there's certainly need. And if DIA is not an organization that has that need in future years, then there are probably other organizations that'd be happy to submit proposals for those dollars.
Okay, I'm just wondering, not for this forum, but if we could put a request into our city attorney to outline the liability dangers that we have by not having an MOU in place with the Downtown Association, just so I can be informed and be able to make some good decisions on this. I don't think we need to, I'm asking for that before this comes back to council. I agree with the administration recommendation to go ahead and approve those funds, but as a council member's fiduciary responsibility, I'd just like to know that for liability purposes for the city.
Certainly, and let me once again stress that we are not making that general payment, so there is no liability. There are other agreements, so for DIA to receive the dollars that are before you, there will be a separate agreement, which is reviewed by the city attorney. I'm happy to make the request to the city attorney regardless of your, regardless, I will ask the city attorney to opine more broadly, and if this comes back, you'll also have to decide this is a regular or consent item. We'll make sure it comes back.
Great, yeah, I think I'm just asking for, you know, do we have liability right now the way we're operating without an MOU in place? And just if we're okay, and because we don't have an agreement, we don't have any liability, I'm just concerned there might be other things that we haven't closely examined. And so, again, it's not a request for an extensive white paper or anything like that, but just so that we, as a council, are able to understand the liability for the city. But I do agree with the administration recommendation to go ahead with these funds, and I don't think a requirement for an MOU would necessarily be appropriate, as it seems that they're from two different buckets, so to speak. Thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele.
Councilmember Joe's comments reminded me that I also needed to say that I am chairman of the Board for Influence the Choice, and I had checked with the city attorney earlier on the same issue of recusing myself from votes, and her conclusion was that since I don't receive any personal benefit from the grant, that it was okay for me to vote on it, and I would presume that would also apply to Councilmember Joe as well. But I do think for transparency, that I would like people to know that I'm in that position with Influence the Choice. Thank you.
All right, I will ask at this point if we, do we have any other questions? Is there anything more that you want to present?
I have concluded my presentation. I just, if either of the Arts Commissioners who are joining us would like to say something, I'm not sure.
All right, well, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak at this time?
Chair Joe, both of our virtual attendees are members of the Arts Commission, and previous polling of them has indicated that neither of them have comments at this time.
All right, and as we have no members of the public that aren't city staffers, I think we can safely go to deliberation of this item. So, Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, I'm in full support of the recommended amounts. I'm just gonna touch on how the programs are significant to the way that I feel about our community. And I'll just point to the Veterans Day event that is being funded up at the Highlands. I had the pleasure of attending that event this past November, and to see the Girl Scouts up there preparing the facility, welcoming the veterans that come in, making them feel appreciated and at home, was just something that warmed my heart, so to speak. And I think that for the amount that's in there, the return that we get in terms of both contributions from young people who are going to be adults tied into our community in the future, and those veterans that have come back from service wherever in the world they were called to, I think it's just a great synergy and helps really diversify the community and make us a richer community in there. So I'm in full support of the recommendations.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So thank you. Before I start my remarks, I just want to say that I did have the privilege of working with Amy Dukes when I was a member of the Arts Commission for years, and just want to commend her and say what a very fine administrator you are of the arts.
Thank you so much.
The new signs on the front street for the Creative District are just fantastic. So there's always something, I catch something, I see something, and I think, Amy's fingerprints are all over that, so thank you so much for all that you do for the arts. I, too, will approve this recommendation, and I'm really glad to hear that we're going to have a wider conversation about the arts. I always like to emphasize that our investment in arts is also an investment in business development and tourism, and leads to the vitality of this district, of this district, of this community, and also is a tremendous way for bringing people together from all different kinds of backgrounds and points of view to enjoy the arts together. So it's kind of the glue that holds a lot of our community together, and so I always see these investments as just totally vital to our community. And I was also very pleased to see the wide range of grants that are being awarded this year. So absolutely, 100% approve this moving forward, and thank you for all your work and the work of the Arts Commission, which I, you know, having gone through it, I know how many hours go into reviewing all those grant applications, so thanks to them, too, and please extend our thanks to them.
Thanks so much.
And with that, I will move that this committee recommends that the agenda build representing the 2023 arts grant allocation be brought to the City Council at the February 6th, 2023 council meeting.
Second.
I think we've had our conversation. I am a huge supporter of the arts and am happy that we live in a community that can make some public investment in the art. And like I said, the part of that, part of that for me is definitely the education out in the community, and I would love to see if we have opportunities in the future to sort of leverage that and do some outreach with our community and help introduce art into the community, because not everybody has spent a bunch of time with art since they were in, you know, middle school, which for some of us was more than a few years ago. So no further discussion there, for all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries three to zero. And did the administration have a recommendation, whether this came back on regular or consent?
I think if we're able to answer Councilmember Joe's questions off agenda, there's probably no reason this can't be on consent.
Okay, let's send it on consent, and if there are still questions, people can address them at that time. All right, I believe that is it for our agenda this evening. Hold on a second, let me just go to, let me just double-check that. You never know if you had any surprises that you didn't think of. Nope, are there any announcements from any committee members?
Just one thought, as this committee has jurisdiction over the Police Department and public safety, I would just ask that we kind of keep an eye on the legislative items that are going through concerning pursuits and reducing the level of making a decision to pursue from probable cause down to reasonable suspicion. I think that'll have an impact on the safety in our community and some of the crime issues that we're seeing at some of our big retailers, so let's throw that out there for monitoring as we go forward this year.
Anything else? All right, thank you. With that, we are adjourned at 7:33 PM. Thank you, everyone out there at home, and have a great evening.